Ready?
You feel fit?
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
Oh.
You gonna play con hoo?
Check, drag, pop. Absolutely. Yeah, no, I don't have.
Yeah. I think it's non-detectable.
Yeah. That's been the most difficult. Not that I see.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the King William County Board of Supervisors meeting on October 26, 2020. We have two members, the county attorney can't make it and one of our supervisors can't make it, so we're going to do the take a roll to see if we can allow formally to make sure that you all know that Mr. Travis Moskowski will be joining us today. He's on Zoom. I hope you can see him on the screen. It doesn't look like there's anything on the screens, but we're going to take a vote to make sure that they'll allow him in before they call to order.
Mr. Chair, I thought that the county attorney had said that we do not have to do that with the same situation we're in.
Right. But Travis wanted to do it anyway just to be formal so that the, because some people wouldn't be able to know that Mr. Moskowski is with us. We can do that and say that he's here, but this way everyone will know it's written in the minutes that he is attending even though we don't see him. It's just a formal. Mr. Olivia, could you please call just to get verification that everybody's okay with that?
Uh, Mr. Moskowski?
Well, he doesn't get the vote.
He's a personal.
I'm here. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Hodges.
Okay, yeah, guys, I really apologize. I woke up not feeling well this morning and was trying to fight through it all day, but still I'm not feeling great. So I'd appreciate the opportunity to participate remotely and as Mr. Greenwood pointed out, I would rather we go ahead and do it under the code section that allows remote participation just so it's clear that I am here, I am participating, you know, I'm hearing everything that's going on, but just not there physically in the room.
Thank you.
And are you doing roll call or are you asking for a vote?
This is for the vote to allow, I mean, just to be formal.
Aye, to allow.
Mr. Garber?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Welcome to the meeting, Mr. Moskowski.
I appreciate it.
Now we'll call the meeting to order in the roll call, Mrs. Lawrence.
Mr. Moskowski?
Here.
Mr. Hodges?
Here.
Mr. Garber?
Here.
Mr. Moran?
Here.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Next item we have is a moment of silence. We'll follow it by the Pledge of Allegiance if we all could please stand. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda, we have the review and adoption of the meeting agenda. Agenda amended.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we adopt the amended. Second.
And the motion made promptly discussed, uh, seconded, do we have any discussion? Ms. Olivia?
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Weber?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Mr. Moskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Next item may I have on the agenda, I have a comment to make about the reassessment just to clear some air before we get started with the meeting. The reassessment has been underway since February of 2019. The reassessment will be effective January 1, 2021. The 2021 tax rate, which will be the basis for your 2021 tax bills, will be adopted by the Board of Supervisors as part of the budget process in April of 2021. Concerns have been voiced that the new assessment rates will be taxed at the current rate of 86 cents per $100 of value, which is incorrect. Per Virginia Code, the Board of Supervisors must hold a public hearing if they wish to retain more than 1% over the past year's tax levies. During the previous budget cycle, this board stressed to our staff our expectation of a reduced tax rate in tandem with the new assessed values. Bright Minds LLC was contracted to perform the reassessment. This thing's getting too hot. I gotta take it off. Far enough apart. Yeah. Bright Minds LLC was contracted to perform the reassessment with the understanding that a reassessment had not been performed for the county within six years. Increases were seen in assessed values due to home sites being assessed for buildable lots on an equitable basis. Data corrections addressed when found. Neighborhoods adjusted where utilized whereas the last assessment they were not, and building costs and sales prices have increased within the county. The review process will wrap up on October 30, and the town's review process will run November 2 through the 13th. The Board of Equalization is being created now, excuse me, being created now as we speak. We're accepting applications for that position. We usually take one member per district and then we'll have an alternate also, and they'll be, uh, they will start to convene in late January to begin hearing property owners' disputes of your assessments. The Board of Supervisors has approved the creation of a county tax assessor's office. The tax assessor will be contracted position with support staff provided by the contractor and the county. This will allow the county to formally set up an assessor's office and develop the standards and procedures prior to the next assessment. This is a positive move for the county in that it will allow reassessments to take place more frequently, thus addressing market changes more readily and providing consistent staffing reports. Thereby, also reducing the substantial differences as seen in this year's assessment compared to the one done six years ago. Furthermore, since this new office will be an in-house function from now on, changes made in the planning department, commissioner's office, and treasurer's office can be updated more effectively. Hope that clears out some issues and of course, we'll have statements from the citizens we'll take during public comment period. And the next thing we have is public comment period, and we'll have one opportunity of three minutes per individual or five minutes if you're speaking for a group. When you come up to the podium, please state your name and your address, and I'll open the public comment period.
Just come forward.
Yes, come up to the mic right here in the middle. Yeah, you're far enough away.
Good evening, I'm Tim Vaughn, I live at 3147 Darrell Road, and I am speaking for multiple homeowners. So I'm going to give details on my assessment. The theme is consistent across each of them. So basically, the dwelling valuation exceeds fair market value. These are the grounds on which I have made my appeal already. The land value is inaccurate and exceeds fair market value, and other improvements exceed fair market value and are inconsistent with nearby comparables. So specifically, my overall assessment went up 54%. Breaking the property card, the tax card out into three main areas, the building increased 30%, other improvements 159%, and land 58%. And let's break that down. We purchased our home in 2017 for a price of $394,500. It appraised by Navy Federal Credit Union's engaged appraiser at 426. The assessment at that time was 382. The current assessment is $603,000. The Zillow estimate, and I know that's not, you know, a true comp, but just a point of reference, 459. So looking at one of the comps from the appraisal that Navy Federal did for our property in 2016 was the sale that was used as a reference on the appraisal. It sold in 2019 at an 18.3% increase. That seems to be a baseline, right? Comp two is another home within a half a mile of our property, a thousand square foot larger, a higher grade construction, though it does only have 30 acres compared to our 51, so there's fewer acreage. It sold in June of this year for $515,000, though the assessment was $554,000. So you can see that's quite a big difference from true fair market value, but it's a point of reference relative to our property. Now, the land, getting into the accuracy issue, 51.47 acres for us, 50.47 acres described as woodland, one acre for the home site. Despite the fact that it had a 16-acre field or pasture and one property boundary borders Herring Creek, we have no swamp land, though the property on our west side has 20 acres of swamp, the one on the east side has six acres of swamp. We have no swamp land. So if you look at the soil maps from USDA as well as FEMA, and you look at Google Earth overlay, roughly about four to five, maybe six acres, depending on how you draw your line, of swamp land, that's not on our assessment, either the new one or the old one. So there's errors there. Now, the other improvement section, a 36-by-60 detached garage was appraised, or in the assessment, I should say, the pre-2015, I guess it was 2014, $41,000 is what it appraised, assessed at. $106,000 is what it assessed at this time. No changes in it whatsoever. Now, I will say that when I talked with Mr. Chastain on my appeal, he was engaged, he was very receptive to the points I was raising, but he did make a few points that kind of gave me a little concern. One, he said, well, that's a big garage. It's 36 by 60. Yes, it is. And it has a one-bedroom apartment above it, which it had noted on the tax guard before this assessment. However, and he made the comment of it's the same size as your house. So our actual house is about 2,070 square feet. It has a 756 square foot apartment above it, one bedroom, an open end on the ground level with a gravel floor that's 432 square foot, open exposed to the environments, and then the rest of it is the actual garage. He talked about, well, what do you think you could rent it for? Well, I can't rent it because the history of the property was originally larger plaque, a larger parcel, was subsequently divided when the original owners were divorced, and we have an amendment or covenant, I guess, that we share the well and the septic with our neighbor on like 623. So, and in that, we cannot use it for commercial purposes, so I can't rent it. So that's a relevant point. Further, if I look at another neighboring property, they have a two-bedroom apartment above their garage, which is overall smaller, it's 28 by 44, twice 36 by 60, but their apartment is 985 square feet, and it assessed at $64,600 this year. So you can see there are numerous errors. There's no way that I could, I cannot see it getting 600 grand for our place, as much as we love it. There's no way that we could get that fair market value. So I just want to bring the point, and I'm sure this is a common theme among our neighbors, and I'm sure you're going to hear it even more, it's just ripe with inaccuracies or inaccuracies and not comparable to true fair market value.
Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Good evening. Chris Cowes, Representative Dreamery Farms, farms in this county and the citizens that choose to be customers of mine. It's interesting, here in October, one year ago was the first time I came in front of this board. And when I did that, I came to speak of inaccuracies and accountability issues related to taxes that are being assessed in King William County. It's common themes, it sounds like. A year ago, I talked about personal property tax errors, real estate assessment errors, business tangible personal property errors, and a meal tax error, and the failing of this county to follow state and county code. That was a year ago. This past summer, three months ago, I came and explained the difference between a serving size, or what a serving size was, and the authority of the Food and Drug Administration. Two months ago, I presented and explained the difference between food manufacturers and restaurants and the authority of VDAX and the Department of Health. Last month, I came and shared with you a letter that was sent to me from the Commissioner of Revenue, which is a complete fabrication of the truth and still doesn't address either of those two material issues. After all this, what's happened? Even you guys saying a couple months ago that you were addressing this issue in closed session, things were happening, I have seen absolutely no progress or engagement by this board. Never once have you spoken, to my knowledge, in support of either me or the Commissioner of Revenue this issue, and we still have all these tax issues. Let me just present to you how ridiculous this is. I've got two bags here. This bag was bought through Foodline, just right on my way down here. This bag, products that I sell from my farm. In each of these bags, we have four items. We have a salad kit, a multi-serving salad kit with dressing, nuts, cheese. We have a bottle of dressing. We have washed and ready mixed greens, and we have a dozen eggs. Over here, I have my version of the salad kit, fresh lettuce, bottle of dressing, and a dozen of eggs. Difference between these two? Everything here was grown in Virginia and made, manufactured by a small farm in this county. Everything here was bought in, by Foodline based in North Carolina. The lettuce is from California, the dressing is from Chicago, and the eggs are from Pennsylvania. This bag here from Foodline, you're not charging the meal tax on, you're only charging food tax. This bag here, you're charging, you want to charge a meal tax on, to the county, to the citizens of this county. Both, everything in here was made by a manufacturer regulated by the Food and Drug Administration. This county was a satellite three centuries ago, in the early 1700s, and for a very long time, this is how people in this county got their food, from their local farmer, all right? The actions and inactions of this county that you're taking on these local matters are perpetuating and subsidizing large out-of-state businesses and Richmond law firms at the expense of higher taxes and inequalities. This board's inaction is a decision, and that decision appears to directly support large conglomerate businesses over the local farmers and the citizens in this county in which you guys were elected to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chair. Anyone else inside? Oh.
Good evening. I am Catherine Graves Stanley. I live at 279 Adams Lane in Alith. I am here on behalf of my father and the Graves family properties that we both, that we all share here in two different districts of the county. We have not yet had our meeting with Mr. Chastain, so I won't get into details, but there are concerns about some inaccuracies, particularly bundled parcels. What I will say is what concerns us the most is while I agree, we, our family agrees in bringing properties up to fair market value, I'm concerned about the statement that was put into the Tidewater Review about a 70 to 75% tax. Gentlemen, that's not a reduced tax rate. We don't have services in this county to justify a 70 to 75% tax rate.
Ms. Graves, excuse me just one moment. The board has not put out anything under paper saying 75% increases.
I understand. Yes. No, I understand. I understand. It was in the Tidewater Review.
I get that. Like I said, Tidewater says what they want.
I'm not gonna, apparently it came from an office here in the administration building, but because I don't trust the verification process, I won't name any names.
We did not say.
What I just want to say to you all, on behalf of not only my family, but other citizens, is you got to carefully look at that tax rate. We're not Hanover County or nowhere near Hanover County as far as services. We don't even have a pharmacy here anymore. I even personally tried to keep that pharmacy here. So we need to make sure that that tax rate is much lower than anywhere near the 70s. I feel like we need to look somewhere like King and Queen, you know, their tax rate is in the upper 50s. Possibly, you might be able to stretch it to the low 60s. I won't put numbers in your mouth, but a 70 to 75% tax rate is unjustifiable. We do not have those kind of services here in this county, so I do hope you take that under great consideration. I'm also a business owner here. I've been here for 12 years running a heating and air conditioning business. My father is still a farmer, so he pays tax on his farming revenues in this county. Please don't force us to leave. It's very easy to leave. It's very easy for me to move my business, but I choose to run it here. I love my customers, and I want to stay here, but if you tax me out, I have to make other choices, as do other residents here in this county. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Graves.
Morning. I mean, I should say evening. My name is Raymond Carter. I'm at 2898 Green Level Road. I've contacted each and every one of you with no response, except for one person. Based off the appraisals and the assessments that are going on, so my concerns are, I've noticed several inaccuracies on my appraisal alone, on my assessment, and my house was assessed at 262.2%. I paid $134,000 just for the house to be built. Now you're assessing it over 200 and something thousand, or 194,000, I should say. And some of the errors I've seen, I've got central air. I got, but I'm being taxed for two air conditioning units? Two! All right, that's one point. The other one is this. How do you come up with 262% increase when the house is valued by my math at 185,000? Just for the house, not the 11 acres that it sits on. Talking about, I also had a generator installed. By the way, that was assessed at $500 over MSRP. 500, that's not counting the retail price, which drops it down another 250 bucks. I retired from the military. I came back to Virginia, then come back here to get taxed to death. Bought a house in this county. I invested in this county when I bought that land and that house. I paid taxes while I was in the military for 22 years. Paid taxes before that, before I went in the military. I've never seen anything as egregious as this. And I'll look each and one of you in the eyes and tell you that. Numerous errors. I've sent you both, I've sent it all to you, mathematics and everything included to it. I'm not going to sit here and waste time, but I will tell you. An audit needs to be done about how these assessments were done. This assessment needs to be postponed until those audits are done. A thorough review needs to happen before you send these out, before you tax these people. You got people with disabilities who can't afford this. You got people on fixed income. Those are all impacted by COVID as well. The government was shut down by the state mandate by executive orders 50 through, what, 65 now?
I think your time's up.
I'm just saying. You have those to take in consideration when these assessments were done as well.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, my name is Lisa Mason, and I'm at 392 Rowan Oak Trail against King William. To follow on what the other gentleman was saying, I don't understand why the onus of finding the errors is on the citizens. If Bright Minds prepared this, do they have no ownership in the fixing, whatever the assessment is or the database? If this is all computerized, and it really should be, why can't they search through and find whoever is up 100% or 50% and go back and look at these and do, as he suggested, an audit? I don't understand why the people of this county are already paying somebody else to do this assessment, and yet we all have to go through ours line by line and figure out the math, and then come in and have a meeting with Mr. Chastain, I'm not even sure who he is, to find out where the errors are. The onus on finding the errors shouldn't be on the citizens. It should be back on Bright Minds. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Robyn Johnson. I live at 1173 Stevens Lane. I wanted to follow up on what the lady said about services in the county and the tax rate the way it stands. Where I live, I get no cell service in my house, so I maintain a cellphone and a landline. Internet, my only decent option is using that, and it's not strong enough to support me working from home, which is where my employer sent me in March. Hardship. When we had a fire, one of our outbuildings, we stood there and watched it burn to the ground, waiting for the fire department. These are services that every citizen that pays taxes should have. We shouldn't have to beg for it. By now, it should be readily available for all citizens. And our tax rate, the way it stands, with the lack of services, is just highway rock. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Bob Earhart, 644 Edgar Road, 5th District. Not going to get into specifics. Each person can come up here and identify individual discrepancies in their assessment. I am here to say that this needs to be given an extension. I'm going to talk about process. 58.1-3331 of the Code of Virginia requires a notice to be given at least 45 days prior to the taxpayer's appeal. Requires a statement informing the taxpayer of his rights under the section to obtain copies of the assessment records. Requires that the taxpayer be advised of his right that the assessor be made, make a physical examination of the property. None of these items were included in the assessment letters that went out. Furthermore, twice by email and once in persons, I've specifically asked for my working papers, which is required to be available in this office under the Code of Virginia. I'm told there aren't any working papers, they're all on the computer. I requested a list of comparable properties or sales figures identified in Item C of that same code citation. I was given the whole county list of properties. Using properties sold in West Point on public sewer or waterfront, or even Central Garage on public sewer, is not comparable to six acres. on public sewer, is not comparable to six acres in Mangahick. According to Fannie Mae, a property is comparable if the market considers it a substantial competitive substitute. Once a property is determined comparable by the appraiser, the appropriate analyses and market adjustments must be made, um, comparable based on market data, particular neighborhood, competing locations, et cetera. The key is for the appraiser to adequately explain and support the rationale for using comparable properties selected in the appraisal report. Again, not done. Furthermore, a market area is defined as a type of property, type of transaction, geographic area in which competitive competition exists, and the homogeneity of the properties within its boundaries, and should not extend across the county. I'm also extant, asking an extension be given, uh, based on what I believe to be noncompliance with Section five oh eight, Title II of the Americans with Disability Act. Uh, I know numerous people who do not have access to the computer. This was only provided for people to come in and look at by the computer. Um, the ADA requires that PDF documents be searchable. You have to have hashtags and keywords. This is not done. Um, the PDF document that's on there as a preliminary sales figure, uh, graph, you have to have, um, you have to be able to search. You know, people with visual impairments cannot identify that picture. You've got to have keywords that are searchable under that ADA. So you've got all the links in there, so you have everything that you need. Again, you need to put the brakes on this until people have more time.
Anyone else from this room? Ms. Derek, do we have anybody on Zoom?
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
My name is John Foltz. My address is six seven seven McKendry Lane, Allen, Virginia. And I have talked to not only neighbors, but right here tonight, is something is very wrong when you're raising during a pandemic, an average of thirty to, my property, seventy-nine point three percent. And our economy is running about half wide open. It's very hard for me to be retired, and I'm supposed to be retired. I work as a consultant. My background is mining before that, milking cows, running a dairy. And gentlemen, when the cows aren't milked, we have a problem. In this county, I wasn't coming here to talk tonight. I thought I wouldn't even be able to get in the door because I thought it'd be full of people. But I can tell you, we have property for sale within seven miles of Fredericksburg, Virginia. My family, my mother passed away a hundred and two, trying to sell a hundred and twelve acres. We had to cut the price, and it's, it's, I can provide information on that from real estate people, from one million dollars to seven hundred and ninety thousand, and we can't sell. And you're raising our prices up. I got some old barns, had to spend all this money to have it, uh, sprayed for termites. Now I shouldn't let the thing fall down. They increased taxes on that. Seventy-nine, it's tri, seventy-nine point three percent on some termite barns. And I came in here to talk to the half-bright, I mean, the full-bright people, and I was, I, I don't know what company, and I've been around some pretty big businesses. I've never heard anybody so arrogant say, "I'm the Bright Minds Incorporated." That's so arrogant, it just hit me the wrong way. The lady here was very nice. I was sitting at a table, gentleman over here came over. I put my farm in a conservation easement, and he doesn't have time. He says, "Well, I can't look at this today." What I'm saying is, you have some incompetent people that have done this assessment. You need to reload and try again. You've got, this is wrong. And we've got poor people, we've got senior citizens, of which I'm one, they tell me, and they can't afford to pay tax. They're going to have to move. I have a friend plays for the Atlanta Falcons. His aunt in Newark, New Jersey, hasn't took out a tax bill for twenty-two thousand in a little house she's lived in all her life, and she can't afford to live in her own house. Are we going to be like New York and New Jersey? I hope not. I'm sorry I had to bring this. I had voice surgery a year and a half ago, and it didn't help my singing one bit. What's this mean? Oh, I thought you were Girl Scout.
Well, thank you so much.
Tell my old center, Mr., is he there?
Who? Oh.
Mr. Foltz, very good to see you. I hope you're doing well.
Hey, I'm doing better, but it's good to see you. At this point, I didn't get to see you. I was looking for
Yeah, sorry, sorry I couldn't be there, but it's good to hear from you.
Do what you can do to help the people counting. I think you need to reload and get somebody else in here to do this assessment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Garner. I live at eighty seventy-one Davis Mill Road, Manquand. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but after hearing Mr. Foltz and others, I'm, I am up here. I have lived in this county forty-eight years, and we had not much when I moved here. We have more since I've moved here, but now we're, now we're losing again. We're losing. We don't have a pharmacy, we don't have a dentist. This town, this county needs a pharmacy desperately. I think something ought to be done, ought to be a hold on this and, and do an audit or do something, because I am a senior citizen, I am retired, I have a limited income, and I do not want to move from this county. But if I have to, I will. And there are a lot of senior citizens in this county, and this is a wonderful, beautiful county, and I hate to see the people leave. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Foltz.
Mr. Chair, I can't stand it. We do have a pharmacy, you do need one up county, but we do have one in West Point.
Right.
I know it's a long way from you, but tonight it is, I understand, but there is one.
Just one.
It's not like we don't have any.
Anyone else in this audience? And no one was on Zoom, right, Eric? Nobody asked? Okay, looks like no one else. Last minute, we'll close public comment period. Thanks for everyone's comments. Next item we have is consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to accept the consent agenda.
A second. Motion made and properly seconded to accept the consent agenda as written. Any discussion? None? Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Grabber?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Mr. Mescowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hodgins?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Next item we have is presentations. Nine A, physical year twenty twenty, regional animal shelter narrative report of activities. Ms. Lori Betts, regional animal shelter manager.
We forgot to approve all of the minutes. Correct? It's all parts. Okay.
Everything under the
Well, I did have one thing on that. I thought it was, uh, uh, the VACO voting. I was under the assumption that it was going to be Ed, and I was going to be the alternate. Is that right, Travis?
Did you hear that, Travis?
Yes, that's, that's what we, that, that was the vote that we took at the last meeting, was for Ed to be the primary voting member and you to be the alternate.
Yeah, you are the alternate in the minutes.
I'll correct it.
Okay.
All right, that's all.
All right, good, good catch then.
All right, just, just go, um, Ms. Lawrence could adjust that, or note that the amendment minutes will be corrected. Now, Ms. Betts, that's Sorry about that.
Yeah, that's my fault.
Good evening. My name is Lori Betts. I'm the manager of a regional animal shelter. Uh, I'm here to, uh, deliver the FY twenty report of shelter activities, and this report is being submitted in compliance with item sixteen of the King William, King and Queen Animal Shelter Agreement. Following this narrative, you all have that in your packet, is the calendar year twenty nineteen statistical report of the number of animals cared for by the shelter from each county, reflecting five hundred and eleven dogs and two hundred and forty-seven cats, for a total of seven fifty-eight companion animals. Our activity report is compiled in accordance with VDAC's state reporting requirement in calendar year format. So the twenty nineteen calendar year has six months of FY twenty in it. For comparison, the calendar year twenty eighteen report is provided reflecting six hundred and thirty-six total dogs and cats cared for at the shelter. Following the statistical reports are the unaudited expenses and revenues for twenty twenty. The VDAC's inspector did not visit the shelter in FY twenty. The last inspection was in April of twenty nineteen. We had four animal cruelty seizures in FY twenty involving large numbers of animals, all originating from King and Queen County. These large number cases are burdensome on the shelter's resources, staffing, and operational costs for obvious reasons. Seized animals are held until final determination by the court as to custody. On July fifteenth, twenty nineteen, fifteen dogs, hounds, and chihuahuas, and six cats were seized. This case was resolved in a week as the owner surrendered the animals to the court. The court ordered restitution of a thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and some change for the care of these animals while in custody, and that amount has been collected. On August twenty-seventh, twenty nineteen, thirty-two Great Danes were seized. Thirty of the dogs were held twenty-six days, and two were held sixty-five days for continued court proceedings. Only four hundred and fifty dollars of the court-ordered restitution of seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and sixty-six cents for the care of the animals has been received by one of the co-defendants. On November twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen, five pit bull dogs were seized, three of them being pregnant females who delivered an additional twenty puppies while in custody. These dogs were held seventy-nine days for continued court proceedings. None of the court-ordered restitution of thirteen thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars has been received. On March fourteenth, twenty twenty, ten hounds were seized. These dogs were held sixteen days for court proceedings. The court ordered two thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars and eighty-eight cents in restitution, which has not been paid by the defendant. When the COVID-nineteen pandemic caused a shutdown of normal activities in March and April, citizens and rescue groups stepped up to adopt and foster shelter pets. This was an occurrence experienced nationwide by shelters, contributed to the fact that people were home constantly and had the extra time to give a new pet or foster pet the extra attention they need. Rescue groups were imploring us for dogs to transfer as they had so many people wanting to provide foster care. We were able to keep animals moving out during the shutdown by scheduling appointments with visitors, controlling their movement inside the shelter, practicing distancing, mask-wearing, and sanitizing behind them. During the same time period, the number of animals coming into the shelter dropped off considerably. By June, we returned to the usual flow of animals into the shelter and have continued normalcy since. The Regional Animal Shelter facilitated ten low-cost spay-neuter and vaccination clinics through our partnership with Indian Rivers Humane Society in FY twenty, accomplishing a hundred and fifty-six sterilization surgeries for owned pets in our community. We did have to cancel our April clinic due to COVID-nineteen, so we did not accomplish as many spay-neuters as we did last FY fiscal year. This program provides transportation for pets to and from the clinic and offers low-cost vaccinations as well. King William and King and Queen residents receive additional ten dollars off the already low-cost surgery price, which is funded through the DMV Animal Friendly License Plates annual revenue, which is allocated to each county in the Commonwealth to be used for community spay-neuter. This adds an incentive for pet owners to use our clinic. We are optimistic that our efforts to provide a local source for low-cost spay-neuter will contribute to a lower number of unwanted animals coming through the shelter. We continue to encourage pet owners to spay and neuter their pets and offer information about low-cost opportunities. There are fifty-eight active releasing agencies, also known as rescue groups, signed on with Regional Animal Shelter to transfer animals for adoption into their programs. As depicted on the animal activities report, more animals are transferred to releasing agencies for eventual adoption into permanent homes than by members of our community. We are constantly networking with these groups in an effort to increase our live release rate. Regional Animal Shelter continues to have adoption specials throughout the year, which have seasonal or holiday themes and help to encourage interest in adoption of pets by members of our community. During these adoption specials, the county waives the twenty-dollar adoption fee, and Indian Rivers Humane Society usually pays half of the spay-neuter fee for the adopter. This adds an incentive to adopt from the shelter. Uh, we held our, uh, reading with cats program in July and August of twenty nineteen in partnership with the county's four-H program. This provides much-needed out-of-cage enrichment and socialization for the cats and is a popular program with community parents. Rising kindergarten, gardeners through rising third-grade students had the opportunity to practice their reading while cats awaiting adoption at the shelter attentively listened. Our spring twenty twenty education programs in both counties with elementary, middle, and high schools were canceled due to COVID-nineteen. May I answer any questions?
Just, uh, if my math is correct with the restitution numbers, I'm showing roughly a little over twenty-three thousand dollars that has not been collected. What is the normal
I think your math's correct.
What's the normal process? Is it worth to pursue that through court?
Um, it's, the, the court has to compel the people to, to pay it. They would have to bring them back in for a show cause. It's all being handled by the King and Queen Commonwealth attorney. Um, you know, I, I prod here and there, but there's nothing I can do to get the money.
So it's not actually a cost because the Commonwealth attorney of the
I'm sorry.
It's not actually a cost because the Commonwealth attorney of King and Queen is pursuing it, correct?
There is a court order, so I, I guess they, they wait a while. If they don't get anything, then they do a show cause, have the people come back in. The last one with the pit bulls, which was the most expensive one, the thirteen thousand, six hundred and forty-four, the defendant is still in court, is, I'm sorry, is still in jail. So on bigger things than dogs, you know? I don't know when he might get that.
So is it a shared King and Queen? Uh, if, if the majority of the dogs or, or cats come from King and
The, the operation of the shelter is split right down the middle. Doesn't matter how many animals come from which county.
That restitution was ordered paid back here, correct? Through the court?
Yes, it's paid to the court, and the court pays
Is this one of the worst years you've seen so far? Were you usually pretty even?
Oh, yes.
That's what I was thinking. Yeah, that's what I thought.
And, um, if you looked at the, the unaudited reports, there is a line there under revenue for restitution, but that is restitution that is still being paid from cases from years back.
Right.
From FY seventeen, from FY eighteen, um, where, you know, people might pay fifty bucks every couple months or something.
Travis, do you have any questions?
Uh, well, well, no. Uh, I do want to say, though, um, thanks as always to you and your staff. I know this year's been really hard on you guys, um, and I know this year's been really hard on you guys, and you've been doing a great job keeping everything going. So I appreciate the work that y'all have been doing, and please let us know if there's anything that we can do to help you in your mission.
Okay, thank you, Travis. I would just like to ask for the community to help us by taking care of the pets that you want to keep. Spay and neuter is the key. When they show up at our door, we only have so many cages. We don't want to euthanize these animals. There are only so many rescues. There's no rescues. One rescue that will take cats, and that's only a few a month. And we're inundated right now with cats. We've had a waiting list since July of people waiting to turn in litters of kittens. And we just keep putting people on the back end of that list. So we need the citizens' help. Take care of the pets you have, keep them home so they're not creating nuisances in the community, and they wind up at the shelter. Take advantage of the low-cost spay-neuter programs that we offer, not just ours, but we have three local mechanics field, Gloucester, Ashland, spay-neuter clinics that are low-cost for anybody to use. Just pick up the phone and call them.
Ms. Betts, do you actively participate in Facebook, for example?
Yes.
I'm always seeing kittens wanted or giveaway, and they're snapped up immediately, it seems.
Well, you have a Facebook site, correct?
We do have a Facebook site, yeah. We have Adoptable Pets Album on there, and...
Maybe it's not getting enough airtime.
Well, no, I mean, if somebody can get a free kitten on the street corner rather than come in and get one that's been vetted a little bit and pay 20 bucks, and the state requires animals in the shelter must be spayed or neutered, whereas the free one out in the community doesn't require that. And it's cute for a while, but guess what? When it's six months old, it's as prolific as a rabbit.
Ms. Betts, do we have anything on our website for their department that we could put something out there? Maybe it's numbers or...
They have a page on our website.
Yeah.
Right.
They share our things all the time.
Okay, it just doesn't seem to work, I guess.
Go to our Facebook page and like it and see your notifications.
All right, sounds good. Okay, thank you.
Just sharing, somebody said earlier, we don't have internet all throughout the county.
Well, that's true, too. Thank you, Ms. Betts.
Thank you.
The next item we have on our agenda is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Mr. Matthew Kite, Commonwealth attorney.
Good evening. Good evening, gentlemen. Do I need a clicker? Thank you. Thank you. And while this is coming up, let me just clarify. So I don't know, I can't speak for my colleague in King and Queen County, but here in King William, the process when we see animal seized and restitution is ordered is... Usually, the court will order within a specific amount of time, a year, depending on the amount. And if it's not being paid back in time and matter, Ms. Betts has contacted our office in the past and requested a show cause, which we've promptly filed. It's a little tricky because really the only way that you can enforce it at that stage is a violation of a court order, which is punishable by up to 10 days in jail at a time. So it's not, it doesn't have the same bite, for example, as if you weren't paying your restitution on a grand larceny when, you know, stole $5,000 from somebody and not paying it. You could go back to prison for the amount of time that might be suspended on this. It's a violation of a court order, which is a maximum of 10 days in jail. So it can be difficult. When I first took office, we seized 60-some dogs in a house down here past the county, past the courthouse, and those folks, I don't know if they ever finished paying the restitution without a lot, so they moved away, fortunately. I'm going to be speaking tonight. It is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I did want to start by introducing to you all our Deputy Commonwealth Attorney Tiffany Webb.
Hey.
Hey.
Welcome.
Ms. Webb joined the office on July 1st. She is the Bstop Violence Against Women's Act prosecutor in the office. She handles the vast majority of the Juvenile Domestic Relations Court, and in all cases, no matter what court they're in, it involves violence against women, as well as carrying a regular-sized docket on other matters, more regular, I guess, matters. So I'm really glad to have Tiffany in the office. She lives in West Point. She is a fantastic lawyer, and she's doing a fantastic job, so I'm really glad that she's here. That is up now. Yep, so this is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Here we are at the end of the month. I try to give you all every year a presentation on this. Tonight, we're going to be talking about strangulation. Wait, what? What is? There we go. Did you do that? We'll find out. The man behind the curtain over there. Just some strangulation. Strangulation, we'll talk about specifically what it is in a second, but just in general, these statistics have not changed in the nine years I've been doing this. One in four women and one in nine men experience domestic violence. Homicide is a leading cause of death for women younger than 44 years old. Nearly half of all female homicide victims, nearly half of all female homicide victims are killed by their current or former partner. The most dangerous domestic violence offenders strangle their victims. Forty-three percent of those who were strangled were strangled in the year prior to their murder, not necessarily their murder was a strangulation, but they were strangled by that person before. A woman who has suffered a non-fatal strangulation who survived it with her partner is 7.5 times more likely to be killed by that person. So it's extremely dangerous. Here in King William County, from January 1st till last Friday, October 23rd, there were 43 cases, we're prosecuting right now, 43 cases involving domestic violence just against women. There are domestic violence cases that we prosecute against the men of the victims in. Occasionally, there's children, but those are parsed out. Someone cooking eggs in here?
They're timer.
There are 43 cases we're prosecuting right now, and these are just the cases that reported law enforcement and investigation was able to lead to charges. We know that it's much more widespread than that, particularly during this time of year. I mean, during this time that we're in with COVID. Just for comparison's sake, over that same period of time, January to last Friday, January 1st to last Friday, we're prosecuting 21 DUIs, so almost twice as many domestic violence cases as DUIs. Seven of those domestic violence cases, except we're prosecuting seven active strangulation cases, six are in domestic violence, one is not domestic violence. The law for strangulations, that's the code, Section 18.2-51.6. There we go. Thank you. Yeah, I think you probably should. There we go, I think I got it right. There we go, I think it's working now. Any person without consent impedes the blood circulation or respiration of another person by knowingly, intentionally, and unlawfully applying pressure to the neck, such person resulting in the wounding of such person is guilty of strangulation. It's a class 6 felony. It's punishable for five years in prison. There's a lot of elements to this charge. It can be very difficult to prove in court. We particularly have issues when it comes to describing the injury that someone has received. That's a quick and dirty, that's what your neck looks like without the skin and with your head pulled back like that a little bit. The key places that we want to focus on in this are the carotid and the jugular, as well as the throat and all the little blood vessels that go through there. Why is strangulation so dangerous? We talk about the mechanism of strangulation, how it works. Compression is applied to the neck. It is a common misunderstanding, and believe me, it's a common misunderstanding with courts, with lawyers, and with law enforcement, as well as some medical professionals, that the first thing that you feel when you're being strangled is that you can't breathe. In reality, this compression, what it's doing is it's really cutting off your blood flow to your neck, which causes your brain to lose oxygen. And with enough force, and I'll talk about the force here in a second, with enough force, it can also compress your trachea, which is what causes you not to be able to breathe. Several years ago, we prosecuted a case where a young woman was strangled and suffered a massive stroke as a result of that strangulation. We feel confident, she passed away later, but we feel confident that she probably could not breathe, that her trachea was compressed, but the compression of her carotid and her jugular was what caused her stroke. So how much pressure is required? For jugular compression, just the jugular vein, four pounds of pressure. Not a lot. For comparison, many firearms, trigger pressure is one and a half to six pounds. So roughly about what it takes to pull a trigger. Carotic compression, carotid artery, 10 to 11 pounds of pressure. So if you, it's about half of what it takes to, the pressure to open a soda can. And trachea compression is 33 pounds, which is, if you talk about the average male handshake, statistics, I have calculated these things, 80 to 100 pounds. So not a lot, not a lot of pressure. Importantly, visible injuries on the neck are not common. This is another common misperception, visible injuries not being common. And if there are going to be present, they're often delayed. Occasionally, law enforcement on the scene, if they're called rather quickly, will see red marks on someone's neck. It's not unlike when you press your finger really hard and you can see some impact on your skin. Sometimes there's scratches, sometimes there's other injuries, but the red marks and things like that are often dependent on someone's skin complexion. African-American folks don't have the same reaction that white folks do to their skin being compressed like that, and/or the time since the incident. Bruising is very rare. Bruising is rare in these, and that's a very common misperception. But if you think about what it takes to get a bruise on your face, a black eye, an average punch is about 30 to 60 to 85 pounds per square inch. That's with someone like me throwing the punch, not someone who's a MMA fighter or somebody, but I am not an MMA fighter, so. But that's, if you think about, that's what leaves a bruise, and you think about 33 pounds maximum pressure to compress your trachea, that's often why there's no bruising. Other injuries to victims, these are the very common injuries. Breathing trouble and pain when they're breathing, trouble or pain swallowing, a sore throat or their neck, their muscles in the back of their neck can become very sore. A hoarse voice or pain speaking. When we often speak with folks in the days immediately after these events, often their voices sound like they've been shouting at a concert or something for a long time. They're very hoarse, and they have pain speaking, sometimes they can only whisper. Headache and dizziness, other injuries. Fatigia, which is the medical description of broken capillaries, the very small little veins in your face, your neck, behind your ears, in this region, behind their ears, in their eyes, bloodshot eyes, and elsewhere. It's caused by the pressure being applied and then being released quickly, and the blood flow stopping, and then starting very rapidly. Disorientation and memory loss. I spoke earlier about the young lady that suffered the stroke. It's not uncommon at all, particularly if someone passes out either because of lack of oxygen to their brain or because their trachea was compressed. And hearing or vision impairment of both. So upon response to someone who is reporting a strangulation, they should definitely be checked out by medical personnel, emergency medical personnel. It is an emergency. They potentially stopped breathing, they potentially lost oxygen or blood oxygen to their brain. They should definitely go to a hospital. If they're not transported to the hospital, if they don't want to go to the hospital on the ambulance, it'd be strongly recommended to them to go to the hospital. And they should definitely have a forensic evaluation, meaning somebody who is specialized in a specialized evaluation to collect evidence. There are times where there will still be DNA from a perpetrator on their neck, depending on how long, they take photographs, they do a medical exam, and they document all those things. We recommend, and we work closely with the forensic nurses at the Bonsecours Hospital Memorial Regional and St. Mary's. My entire career, I've known them, and they are fantastic professional nurses, and so they have made cases for us that were not makeable until they were involved. So those are the three things that definitely should happen medically. Just so you are aware, our law enforcement officers in this county have been trained and are pretty good at these investigations. There's a reason right now that we're prosecuting seven of these cases. It's because the sheriff's office and the West Point Police Department are good at, they know the law, they know this mechanism, and they know how to investigate and retain and collect that evidence for us. They use a form, a documentation, strangulation documentation form that walks them through that investigation, and this is row deputies and investigators. They do a great job on this, and I can't say enough about that because that's, these are hard cases to prove, and when you get folks that do a good job at the beginning on the investigation, that really makes these cases. In my office and the Victim Witness Director's office, we prioritize domestic violence cases in general and strangulation in particular. We provide ongoing training. We, Ms. Webb completed an online training about a month ago on strangulation, ongoing training with law enforcement and on the community. I think, I believe strongly that our early and often contact and outreach to victims really helps our prosecutions in general anyway. We don't wait until the case starts to court. We try to get in touch with them the moment we receive a report from the sheriff's office. And we treat every case as serious because we understand the dangers of strangulation. Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
It's 2020. What kind of trends are you seeing? Well, is it getting worse?
Well, domestic violence or strangulation or crime in general?
Well, domestic violence, being proximity, close proximity.
Well, so there's a difference between just regular domestic violence and domestic violence that gets reported to law enforcement. Our numbers are probably trending a little higher right now, but I don't know if that's because it's hitting us, you know, later, the late section, because for about two months there, it was pretty slow when everybody was in their houses all the time, but the liquor stores were still open, and people still were getting on each other's nerves, and domestic violence was still occurring. So I think it's trending up a little bit. I think there are folks nationwide that believe that it's trending a lot more higher. But I think, I would hope that folks call for help in these situations. In my prior presentations, I remember I said that most domestic violence victims leave, leave, choose to leave, six to seven times before they finally get up the gumption to, you know, power, take their power back, and finally do leave. So I don't think it's gone down. Any other questions?
If someone comes up basically months after an event, that's an extremely hard case to prove, or I'm sure it has a statute of limitations on it also.
That's what I wanted to ask.
So misdemeanors have domestic assault and battery, assault and battery on a family member is a Class I misdemeanor unless it's a third or subsequent offense. That's a felony. Talk about the misdemeanor as a 12-month statute of limitations. That's the code, and it wasn't changed during special session. That's the most common domestic violence we see. Stalking is also a Class I misdemeanor unless there's priors as well. Strangulation, however, is a felony. But the problem with all cases, not just domestic violence, not just strangulation, is they need to be reported to law enforcement so that someone can investigate them. If it doesn't get reported promptly, it makes the investigation harder. We do prosecute what we call historical cases of all sorts, and, but those are, that's a discussion that we would have, let's say that somebody reports something that happened, you know, six months ago, and we would have a discussion with that particular victim. you know, six months ago, and we would have a discussion with that particular victim probably before choosing the charge, that entails a talk about how hard this is going to be to go forward, how evidence just isn't there anymore, things like that. It's not impossible to do that, but just talking about it isn't enough. You need to go to the sheriff's office, you need to go to the police department, you need to go to the Virginia State Police, you need to say, a crime has happened to me, I want to report it, and then they take the information and it goes from there. It's not a guarantee that it gets prosecuted because, again, there's, there are significant evidentiary issues with historical cases. It's just harder to do.
I had a question too, similar to his, a statute of limitations, he said twelve months. I hate to even bring this up, but like you mentioned, it's, you have to bring it up. I'm just gonna say it. My mother was strangled by her ex-husband, but she lived in hand over them. She didn't want to tell us, she didn't tell anybody, but she did go to the doctor. Why, aren't the doctors supposed to turn something like that in?
So adults are not, so when adult is abused like that, there's not a mandatory reporting. It's only for children. And, and the mandatory reporting, I would like to say that I feel like domestic violence that involves children is reported often, but that's not my experience. I, but, so something like that, an adult, so arguably there is evidence available somewhere. Depends on what they did at the hospital. That's, so that, and that, the reason that we recommend people go to the forensic nurses, to the, to the expert nurses for that, is because they are experts at documenting things. They use alternate light sources to see bruising, they use, they can use a CT scan, the gist of this region of your body from your shoulders up. They, they are trained to collect specific evidence for these types of cases. If you just go to your regular emergency room, it, who knows? You might have an incredibly talented physician that knows what they're looking at right away, you might have an equally talented physician that is, this is not their specialty, I don't know what they're, what they're looking at. So it's.
It showed that, it showed it to me, and I'm no medical expert, and that's what the second question was, is there any kind of support group for some people that haven't, didn't know they should have talked to somebody or maybe to try to get over it?
Quinn Rivers, which used to be Project Hope, is a fantastic organization. They do a lot of, I mean, they, they probably get more calls that aren't reported total than, than law enforcement does. Maybe getting to Mr. Moore's question, I would imagine their numbers are up because a lot of people will call those hotlines and they won't call 911. But they, they have excellent resources. We've worked with them pretty closely in the past, not so much lately, but, but they are a good group, an example of it. The other thing that we always recommend to anybody who's a victim of, of any crime that's traumatic, and for most people, any crime is traumatic, is get yourself some counseling. You know, just talk to somebody. Keeping it rattling around in your head isn't, isn't gonna make you feel any better, in my experience. And you can talk to me all you want, I guess, but I'm a crappy counselor. I'm a decent lawyer, but I, I'm not the person you should be talking to. You should be talking to a trained professional.
Thank you. Thank you, Matt. Bill, Travis, do you have anything?
Excuse me, no, but thanks as always, Matt. We appreciate the work that you and your office do.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Next item we have on the agenda is the reassessment update, Mr. Stephen Chastain and Emily Teagle.
Good afternoon. I'm Emily Teagle, most of you know me, and this is Stephen Chastain, he's with Brightmonts LLC and the county assessor. So we just want to present a reassessment update. We've pursued lots of phone calls, lots of questions, and we're trying to help everyone as best as possible. We want everyone to be satisfied at the very end of this. So I'll go ahead and get started. So just a little bit of history on the reassessment. Our last assessment was finalized six years ago, and our current reassessment will start at January 25th, 2019, and it will be effective January 1st, 2021. It's a requirement that reassessment notices are sent to every property owner in the county, which they were sent, and the appeals hearing started October 19th. For county properties, they will finish up October 30th, and the town's appeals will be heard from November 2nd through the 13th. Our request for review will be heard either by appeals or after appeals are finished, the BOE is holding its appeals as well. The Board of Equalization will begin meeting late January to hear any further dispute of assessed values about property owners, if they cannot meet a resolution with Brightmonts, who they should appeal to first, of course. So this slide shows a sales ratio study that is done by the Virginia Department of Taxation. So a little background on a sales ratio study for those that do not know. A ratio study measures the accuracy and equability of mass appraisals by local government agencies. It compares appraised value to market value, which is measured by sales price, and it creates a ratio of the two. This table here shows that the most recent sales ratio was done in 2018 by the state, and it showed that King William County's assessed values were only seventy-nine point zero nine percent of fair market value. This is an explanation for why our assessment values have went up so high. We were very undermarket. It's also important to note that the Department of Taxation's sales ratio, done after the previous reassessment was completed in 2015, was at eighty-nine point nine two percent. So state code requires us to be at one hundred percent fair market value or pretty close to it. After our previous reassessment was completed, we were only around ninety percent. So the values were pretty low to start with.
Could you, could you give some reasoning why they were that way back in 2015? Is there a reason?
So there are a few things that we noticed while doing the reassessment that's very Some of them were neighborhood adjustments were not utilized in our previous reassessment, which they were this time. So basically Stephen did a study showing comparable sales in certain neighborhoods and why there would be increase or decrease based on those. That was added to this reassessment. Data corrections were addressed during the reassessment. There were home sites that were assessed for buildable lots on equitable basis, which were not done during the previous reassessment as well. So there are certain things that, you know, were corrected during this reassessment that may have been overlooked.
Were these fundamental requirements in the last reassessment? Pardon? Were these fundamental requirements in the last reassessment, the items that you just mentioned? They weren't? I'm not sure.
I'm not sure if they were required in the contract, but these are things that assessors use as common practices. Neighborhood adjustments are very common in the appraisal industry.
I was just wondering, Stephen, you were employed by Womplin and Eames in the last reassessment in King William. Just thought you would have had some knowledge of it.
I don't say it very briefly. I wasn't part of the management of the project at all.
So we actually covered a little bit about the next slide. The 2021 reassessment value showed an overall increase of twenty-eight point six three percent. And as you know, a lot of it was because we've been so long without a reassessment. I'll reiterate, several additional factors contributed to the increase of assessments, such as the following, which were home sites assessed for buildable lots on an equitable basis, data corrections addressed during review of real estate data, neighborhood adjustments were utilized, whereas neighborhood factors were not considered during our last reassessment, and King William County has had an obvious increase in building costs and sales prices. It's just a trending upward market in King William, we're growing pretty fast.
The, the original packet that we got, the increase was forty-seven point six one nine. Has it been an adjustment or was that a typo?
No, that was a typo. Yeah. We noticed that over the weekend and corrected it. And then it's also important to note that because of COVID-19, there has been an increase in sales in the real estate industry because of steadily decreasing interest rates. There has been a lot of people that can now afford a much more expensive home because interest rates are lower. So.
Can you step a little closer? I see people give me a sign they can't hear.
They can't hear, okay. I'm sorry.
Get closer to Mike, it may help. That's untrue.
So sales studies are, I'm sorry, you can't hear me. Sales studies are done throughout the entirety of the reassessment. There's a beginning sales study is done, and then before the file is closed at the very end, it is updated, because we want these values to be as close to 2021 as possible, because this is a effective January 1st, 2021 assessment. And one more point we'd like to make, data from the 2015 reassessment is too old to be considered 2021 values. Brightmonts reevaluated percentage adjustments related to each property based off of current information. So a lot of people like to compare their previous value to this one to see how much is increased, but market adjustments aren't necessarily based off of old data. Would you like to explain?
We do have some examples. Oh, we do have a few, a few examples. I don't know how clear they're gonna be on the screen. The property record cards that you're seeing here come out of a database that was designed, I believe in the late eighties. This is something that we're going through, a conversion, and it'll actually produce a card that's much easier to understand for the public. So I apologize if you can't see that, but that's about the best we can do with what we have now.
Is that the new car or the old?
That's the old, this is the, the legacy software that we use for this reassessment. So where it says current property card, that's the 2015 valuation of one, of a one acre lot in the county. The top is the 2021, so that's what it is, that's what we're proposing for next year and what was mailed out on the notice. So if you look at this just on a percentage basis, it's, it's way, way, way up there. But what I was looking at is, on the right in, in the picture, you can see those lots broken out and the, you know, one, two acre lots, one, one of those at the top, maybe three, they all have house sites. Previously, they had house sites except for two. So to be equal and fair with the neighbors, I apply the house site to those two lots. That's just an example of how you can get a percentage increase if you do compare to the previous value, which we don't, that is really high in one case and maybe not so in the next. That means you can build, it's a buildable lot, it's like a building lot?
But it's my wife, how not?
Excuse me, there are no questions from the audience during the presentation. Sorry. That's all right. But it is kind of hard to see, but that's the kind of thing that you can see when they come in, right? They should be able to look at.
During, yeah, during an appeal, we can definitely address these issues one-on-one with anyone who chooses to appeal.
And that's the first process, they come talk to you first. You can do some adjustments, but then if you can't, then they go to the next step.
Yes, sir.
To the board of equally.
Yes, sir. So this is just one example. We do have two more. Another example of the current property card, which is the 2015 assessment, and then the 2021 reassessment card, which is what we're proposing for next year. And it, it may be difficult to see, but where the arrows point, you can see these rates. It says rate, and every one of those rates changed. This is, this is an example where if someone doesn't have one of these features, a bathroom, air conditioning, a porch, a deck, that can adjust one property up or down a different percentage, just depending on what they have on the property. So we wanted to provide an example here as well of that. And I think the question came up about neighborhood adjustments. Basically, this is another example, once again, may be difficult to see, the 2021, the, the current card for 2015 does not have a neighborhood adjustment at all. And I don't know, maybe it didn't need one last time. But we had enough sales in this particular neighborhood. You can see actually, on this one, there's a 2017 sale date and amount of two hundred twenty-eight thousand. And on the current card, the assessment's a hundred fifty-three, a hundred fifty-three thousand two hundred. So if you move over to the 2021 reassessment card, we applied a ten percent neighborhood adjustment. And that's just saying, we had enough sales in that group to say it has to go up or down to get, to be in line with the sale prices for that, for that neighborhood. In this case, it adds an additional fifteen thousand to the assessment for a total of two hundred seventeen thousand six hundred. And once again, this is just one example.
The definition of neighborhood, is it McCully Park, Kennington, or within so many homes adjacent to your property? What's the definition?
It's a, it's a legal description.
How is it applied in?
How does it apply?
Yeah, how is it applied to, again, a cluster community such as Kennington versus up where I live in District Five, where there's not as much density?
It's, it's sales driven, so it really just depends on the sale prices in that group, plus or minus. Some of them don't have an adjustment at all, it's just not warranted.
Who comes up with the neighborhoods? Are they, are they on the planning commission map, or does the real estate people come up with that, or? Like, I don't know.
It's a legal description for, for a cluster of properties.
Oh, right, that's all you're going by, and then a certain cluster amount gets an additional neighborhood amount. Like you said, if you live on a farm, you're probably not gonna have a neighborhood. Okay, right, that, I guess that's what Mr. Garber said.
Oh, I see.
Right, no, Mr. Moore.
Yeah, it's, it's specifically for your, your subdivisions.
He's not gonna have a neighborhood adjustment if he lives on, like, every five acres is a house, house, a house, right?
We would just consider that county, you're just your basic county.
Rural.
Parcel, yeah, rural parcel, yep.
Mr. Chastain, I have a question about your contract. I asked a question.
I asked a question about, uh, physical visits to properties. And I was told, and I'm sure it's correct, that of the, it was five thousand unimproved parcels that your company did not visit. Correct?
Vacant lots?
Unimproved parcels.
Yeah, we, we didn't traverse the, the landscape on those.
And your contract stated that you should visit ninety-five percent of the parcels. So the remaining, uh, parcels, six thousand and some, how many of those did you not visit?
Uh, I have to get a list for you.
Frankly, I'm tired of answering, answering phone. And people, everyone, every person to the main has told me, no one has come to the house.
Yeah.
That would have made your job so much easier during these hearings. And if so many people, you know, the cutoff is four o'clock. Well, people work four eleven. You know, that's, that's not fair to the people. They have to take time off to come to a hearing. Maybe because you didn't come or maybe because they think you didn't come. That's my problem.
Yeah, we have had, I've, I've heard approximately a hundred fifty people. And I'm sure some from your district as well. And we're, we're asking if, if they would like for us to come out for a second visit, we will certainly will do that. That's not, not an issue.
Well, how do you justify your contract? If your contract stipulated that you have to visit ninety-five percent of eleven thousand and some odd, uh, odd parcels and you automatically eliminated five thousand of them. But parcels with timber, some of them were cut over, including mine, no one visited. If you had a visit to my house, you would have seen that the parcels were clearly cut over. That didn't happen. And then when I came to the meeting, I was asked if I.
Your appeal?
Yes. I did bring a contract for my timber cut over and that became argumentative. And then my brother-in-law spoke to you on the phone. I think it was you. The first thing you asked was if he had a contract. Well, if you had went to the site, you were clearly seeing that. And, and probably the only reason anybody asked for a contract is because when I came to mine, I bought a timber contract. But anyway, that's, that's what I feel about it.
Okay.
And all the good people that came here tonight. Believe me, I know a lot of them. You know, it is some errors out there. And I'm sure that all of them, you know, probably weren't totally correct.
That's always the case.
In, in, in my business, when, when I sign a contract, I hold the contractor to the letter of that contract.
That's something we can work on. I mean, try to figure that out. And like you said, if people come in, try to talk with you, you are willing to go out there and look at their property again.
Field review.
He has to by the terms of the contract.
So I think that there's always going to be errors and as long as we straighten them out before the end, I guess.
It's just a lot of people that don't have the ability to go through your property cards. Dick, dick through comparables. And had, had they done what was required of them, a lot of this would have never happened.
We do have one more example and, and two slides and that's. The next example is commercial property. I believe you asked as well, uh, you know, how those were calculated. So the card on the right is the current card, which once again is the twenty fifteen, the twenty fifteen record and assessment. Uh, this is a newer property. So it was built in two thousand sixteen. On the left side is the proposed. And on the right, it was entered in as a new building, retail building, about sixty-eight hundred square feet for forty-nine dollars and twenty cents. So if you value it just based on the cost alone, you cut, you get a value of around three hundred and sixty thousand for that building. I consider the income approach, the sales approach and the cost approach. And for this same building, which you can see sold for roughly one point nine million in twenty seventeen, the assessment was six hundred and forty thousand on that. So looking at a different approach and you know, doing that six years later can really have an impact, uh, on the sale price. Just once again, it just shows we don't apply a percentage up or down to determine the new assessment. And I believe this was already discussed or addressed early in the meeting. The Code, the Code of Virginia fifty-eight point one dash three, three, two, one. It's the effect on rate when assessment results in a tax increase. This was the public hearing that was mentioned. I believe Mr. Greenwood read this at the beginning.
Right.
And this is our last slide. The current twenty twenty King William County tax rate is eighty-six cents per hundred. The tax rate is set by the Board of Supervisors during the annual budget process. The annual tax rate is adopted in April of each year, setting the rate for the calendar year. The Board of Supervisors stated during the budget process, they expected the tax rate for twenty twenty-one to decline to ensure as minimal an impact to the property owners as possible.
There are exceptions to physically visiting a property, correct?
Exceptions?
Uh, you can utilize GIS files, drones, aircraft. Were any of those used in lieu of physically visiting a property?
The GIS system was, was used and then any public information available online or other source when necessary.
But again, the terms of the contract were to physically visit. And he eliminated five thousand immediately evident.
I don't know if that would consider, wouldn't a drone consider visiting or I don't know what's legal?
As in putting your foot on the property.
Is that, I don't know. We don't have our, oh, Andrews hotline supposedly. Is that what it means?
Do we even have the contract up here?
I haven't seen it.
I've seen it. I haven't seen it either. You got it in your email.
Oh, I was going to print.
Anyway, have, I've had several people from town that still do not have, including me, the assessment. Is there a hangup again from that?
No. Um, I texted the tenants again today. Um, people started reading their calendars on Friday. Um, they heard three, feeling down.
They got a few of them earlier than that because I got phone calls before that, but.
And we got that one today by email.
Oh, I'm sorry. But I will tell you, there's folks. And I'm right in the middle of, of buying a house. And I believe me, the seller is thrilled to death when the appraisal came through. I'm not. I'd have rather went with the assessed value. It was sixty-six percent increase over the appraisal. So, um, I don't know, you know? I'm not telling you to put all of them up at sixty-six percent, but that's what mine came up with the appraisal. So the seller right now is very happy. The buyer not so much.
Did it match his appraisal?
I mean, this particular one, uh, was assessed and still, because this reassessment hadn't even been done. I don't know which you went to, but it was two hundred, two hundred thousand, five hundred dollars. The appraisal was three hundred and thirty thousand. So I'm no expert in it, but I'm going to have to pay.
I just have a question. You, you showed us the sheet right before that one that you went to, but it, this is a current card versus the one coming up, but it doesn't show like the sheet we got that shows that. Do you know about what percentage this is from the current card to this particular example? About what this, because like I said, over there it shows six hundred and forty-three thousand and went up to one point nine million. So what would that percentage be?
Is that for the commercial property?
Yeah. See, that's what I'm seeing too. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase. And if we adjust the rate, let's say thirty percent, which we're getting the average of about twenty-eight point six is what you said. They're going to have to pay the difference from twenty-eight to two hundred and seventy-six. So that's something. Doesn't sound quite right. I don't know. But is, is it different for commercial or?
It is. And it's important to look at.
The rate?
Yeah. Because like I said, we're going to equalize, but we not only equalize so much, we're going to equalize with your average, whichever you come out when you finish everything. But like you said, if this particular example went up two hundred and seventy-six and like Bill's case went up sixty-six percent, mine went up sixty-six percent, Mom's went up eighty-seven percent. Some people's might have gone up sixteen percent. They'll be lucky because they'll get less tax. But everybody else that I've talked to is going to get way more tax.
Some, some properties decreased.
Yeah, I said some.
We have a list of, of, of properties that actually went down as well.
The average is what you have to know.
Real short list.
It can't be. It has to be a lot of everybody. And it has to be even because otherwise it wouldn't be that twenty-eight point three percent, would it? Yeah. But I guess we'll get more into that when you finish everything. Would we come up with the rate once you get all the reassessments and abatements done?
After the BOE, I think that's.
Okay, then we'll actually.
They'll make changes. I'm sure they'll make changes.
I have to wait till then.
Because like I said, there's so many maybe, uh, uh, questions and things like that that might be changed. Okay. Anybody else? Drivers, excuse? Oh, yes, right. Travis too. Do you have anything, Travis?
Well, look, my, my concern is that we have it, you know, equity is obviously the most important thing in this. And it's really easy to look at the cards, especially the ones that have recent sales and, and, you know, be able to kind of assess fair market value off of those. But some of the more subjective things like the open land and things, things of that nature, uh, you know, I, I'd really like to see a little bit of work on how we, you know, justify especially some of the, the home site issues and stuff like that. I'd like to, um, maybe get some time with you to talk about that and how we've applied it. Maybe some reasons why it wasn't applied before, you know, because that was the distressing one to me was, uh, that, you know, even with an equalized rate, you know, that, that little parcel that you gave in that, in that early example, um, that's going to be a pretty significant increase on the bill. You know, I know everybody's kind of caught up in the percentages, but what we need to be focusing on is making sure that it's, we're achieving a fair market value assessment. And then it's our job as the board to equalize the rate and make sure that we can continue doing business as that, which, you know, I think we've made clear that that has always been our desire. Um, and, you know, we've not said anything in motion to do anything other than equalize the rate so that on the average, people's tax bills are not going to go up. But of course we know that's on the average. Some will go up, some will go down. Most will stay close to the same. So, uh, I know there's a lot more work to be done. But, uh, you know, we need to be, uh, open and transparent and really justify, justify our work from here on. So, uh, I'll, I'll be keeping abreast of the process and, and making sure we're, we're doing, in my mind, the right thing going forward.
You two are become part of the Board of Equalization or are you subject matter experts? Are you on standby? How does that work? Having never done one or?
I, I'll be available for, for the board, but we're not going to be. We won't make decisions.
We make the decision who the board is. One person from each of our districts.
I understand that part of us.
They're not on it at all.
Yeah, I'll be available to take, take questions.
He doesn't make any decisions. Board of Equalization makes the final decision.
That's right.
Well, he, he'll be there to, you know, just, he'll be there to justify his work and, and, you know, to, to make his own case for why the assessment is accurate. And the property owner will make, uh, their case for why, why it's not. And the Board of Equalization will ultimately make a decision based on the evidence presented. Uh, probably also worth pointing out that, that we'll nominate, but the Circuit Court will ultimately appoint the members of the Board of Equalization. So, you know, the, the Board of Supervisors' role in, in this kind of, once we get to this process is, is kind of rightly, uh, not directly involved because you don't want to politicize that process. You don't want board members getting involved in individuals, you know, property tax disputes. You want that to be, uh, equitable and transparent. You don't want, um, you know, politics to get involved. So, uh, that's an important thing to, to keep in mind.
Yeah, the Circuit Court judge makes the final.
Right. We just suggest, right?
That's correct.
He actually picks like that. We don't have any control of it. And like Mr. Chastain, he's, he gives all the information, but he doesn't have determine, he doesn't tell them what to do.
So how many, approximately how many of you accomplished so far and how many do you have signed up left?
For the appeals?
Yes, sir.
Uh, roughly a hundred and sixty so far.
Completed.
Yeah, completed and they're, they're, we're getting maybe ten or so a day.
An hour apiece average? Do we have enough time is my point. I'm getting to my point here. Do we have enough time by October thirtieth to accomplish what you have left?
Well, we start to go through the town as well.
I'm not even counting the town. That's in November.
Right. The town goes further, so.
Yeah. Yeah, there's enough time. Yeah. Yeah, I'm preparing packets for, for everyone, for every single appeal. So that'll have the appeal form documentation, everything that we are gathering now. Turn all that over to, to the Board of Equalization and then remain available for questions.
If we find out that maybe there's a lot of influx toward the end, can we extend that or is those dates set? I don't know. That's the cutoff date. Like I said, what if we get maybe fifty on the last day and you only have time to do thirty-five? What if we maybe add a day or is it just cut off?
County appeals, um, they don't have to be cut off October thirtieth. They do have the opportunity to go through November thirteenth as well. Yeah, we're, anybody that wants to appeal will be heard.
Okay, that sounds good.
And the question came up earlier about fifty-eight point one dash thirty-three, thirty-one. Are we in good shape on this forty-five day?
Yeah, that's a code for the Board of Equalization. Um, there is a code which I can send all of you that requires a fifteen day notice for mailing before appeals start. So that BOE notice is a different code than, than what we were allotted, but I can send you all the code.
And that's why you had to extend the date to November because West Point hasn't gotten theirs yet. So we had to wait the fifteen days to allow everybody to be able to.
Forty-five days.
Right.
I will be able to clear that up.
Yeah, thank you.
No problem.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Yeah, the next item we have on the agenda is old business would be ten A. We have a public hearing in consideration of ordinance zero nine dash two zero to adopt a two-year time schedule for our reassessment. I'm Ms. Bobby Tassaneri, County Administrator.
Gentlemen, what you have in front of you is a memo, a public hearing notice that was printed in the paper. Uh, the original ordinance that changed the reassessment from a four-year to a six-year period and an ordinance, uh, requesting that we change it to a two-year period. The county currently is operating under a six-year assessment period for King William Code, section seventy dash forty-five. And staff brought to the board, um, in August, a recommendation for, I'm sorry, in September, a recommendation for a four-year term, uh, for the reassessment. The board asked us to revisit that, um, because the board was more interested in a two-year reassessment period. And so what we did is we went ahead and we republished the public hearing with a two-year, uh, reassessment period. And tonight is the public hearing to hear public comments on that. And then for the board to decide if they're going to adopt ordinance zero nine dash twenty, creating a two-year reassessment period for the county.
Questions for Ms. Tassaneri?
I guess a question for Mr. Miskowski. This is, uh, something that I think you pushed, Travis, is, uh, and this is nothing more than trying to flatten any impact in the future, correct? Be it, be it positive or negative, just to try to flatten it sort of this shock.
That's, you're, you're correct in that. And, and Mr. Greenwood can speak to this as well. One, one of the reasons that we set, uh, you know, a few years ago. this as well. One of the reasons that we set, uh, you know, a few years ago, when we got on the board, we were on a three year cycle. Um, and we would have the option to to go without a two or with four. And we went with four at the time because um of the cost of these things, you know, it 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 costs a tremendous amount of money to get these these reassessments done, especially when you're contracting them out. Uh, then of course, most of you all would remember that we pushed it out to six in the hope that we could get an in-house assessor's office going. Uh, we were not successful in that endeavor, so we contracted it out. Um, but I think whether we would have done it at four years or at six years, that's the reason that we've got these percentages that are shooting off the charts that are giving people a lot of anxiety, um, is because it has simply been so long. And what we captured between these two assessment cycles, basically in the last one, was um a very slow real estate market, still struggling to recover from the from the housing crisis born out of the the, you know, the recession. Um, and now we're capturing what is, um, by all accounts, a a pretty hot market, as as Mr. Hodges alluded to. Um, you know, it is it is certainly a seller's market right now, and we're capturing that in this current assessment. If we make it more frequent, then we can avoid wild swings. We can avoid the twenty five percent drop that we got in the twenty fifteen assessment, and we can avoid the twenty eight percent upswing that we're seeing in this assessment, which makes it very difficult to plan. It makes it very difficult to have a consistent and predictable tax rate. If we do it more frequently, then uh we will not have these giant swings unless we have some type of historic, you know, uh, economic situation like maybe we ran into uh in in the later part of the last decade. So um, that's the reason for doing this is is to make it um more equitable, to make it more predictable and and to make it less of a shock every time that we do it. Um, you know, we we shouldn't see any weird double digit upswings every time we do it if we do it every two years.
I wanted to throw in on Mr. Moskowsky's question. Like you said in my statement, it's also once we've become a fully in-house statement, like I said, Mr. Chastain is just a contractor. Now, he is just on the company that did it this last time. He is not going to be, or well, he could be if he puts in for an application, but the person that we'll have moving forward, once the department is fully uh implemented, will be all King William staff, and they'll be hired according to their qualifications for an assessor, right? So then from then on, we'll have full control of that, and the people will work from the county for that, as I said, so we can see the substantial differences, like things that are missed. They're telling us all this stuff that were missed, things that are added from um the records, a addition, a pool, a deck. They aren't getting on there for six, eight months. We'll have our in-house people. They can go across to Commissioner of Revenue. They can see the treasurer. If they get something new, they get a permit, they put something on, the increase will go up. And like you said, the six year thing, these people could have had a whole new house. Unfortunately, like Mr. Garber said, there might even be houses on some of these pieces that probably might not have been gotten. But anyway.
Well, some some people have actually called and told me they were concerned because the house has been removed from the assessor's property cause.
Yeah. So then, like I said, since it's all in-house and we do it more often, that we will catch these things. And once, like I said, right now, it may be a little hectic, but we'll get this all ironed out. All the problems will be fixed. There's a lot of problems, maybe. And they're always are with the new problem. And like I said, the six years, there's a lot of differences. But once everything settles down, we get everything correct, it'll be a lot easier to do. And like Mr. Warren, we'll be able to handle it better, I think, in-house. And then we won't have to, we won't pay all that money, two hundred thousand dollars every six years. And like, that I'm for it too. So that that was the reason for going for the two years. Like I said, me and Mr. Moskowsky started nine years ago. It was set at three. And of course, at that time, we didn't know that three wasn't an illegal number. So we're supposed to be four or six, but.
Yes, I agree. I've mentioned it, you know, in the last meeting because Bobby was presenting the four years. Right. I mentioned so I'm I'm in total agreement with you.
Right. I'm just saying, since we have, we'll have the full department at our own disposal, why not do it every two years? Like they're sitting around, right, for four years. I mean, they have stuff to do, but if we keep it going, they'll constantly have stuff to do, the full-time departments.
I'm not, I'm not sure we'll save money, but.
Maybe not, but it won't be.
But we will have a more accurate.
Consistent, yes. Any other questions for Bobby before we open the public hearing? Thank you. And now we will open public hearing. Anybody wishes to speak, please come to the podium. Three minutes for individuals, five minutes for groups. State your name and your address, please.
Tim Vaughn, again, three one four seven, Doral Road.
Okay.
Um, just on this particular topic, um, couple of questions, I guess. Well, so well, my thoughts on what I just heard, let's put it that way. So we're talking about doing it every two years, vice every three, four, six, whatever it seems to turn out to be. If you're not changing the process, how do you expect it to have any better results? I mean, I can tell you, whether it's been six years or not, my consternation, not anxiety, but consternation over this assessment is based on the fact of what I paid for the house, the property, two and a half, three years ago. And it's nowhere near what they're, you know, what I think I could get is nowhere near what they what they assessed at. So what I'm saying is that if you're going to continue the same bad process, just doing it more frequently, you're not going to have better results. So you had noted how with better control, we're having it in-house, you'll have better results. But if you hadn't been able to build it in four years, I I I don't I don't have good faith or confidence that you'll be able to do so now. You're going to be stuck with contractors, third-party suppliers doing this stuff. Um, and I, I mean, I I don't have a new pool at my place that suddenly would, you know, that suddenly appeared, that that no changes are made to the place to to warrant a fifty eight percent increase in in assessment. So I, my concern is that you're 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 going to still struggle to to get the right team in place, the right structure, the right processes to yield a better outcome. And just because you do it more frequently, I don't think it's going to change anything.
Right. I understand where you're coming from. You were one of the exceptions, and we don't usually answer, but uh.
Like, I don't know about exceptions. I mean, it seems like a whole lot of people, a lot of my neighbors are having the same issue. So and and you made it, I think it was you that made a point earlier, you're this one percent can't go up more than a hundred and one percent. That's the average over the county.
Right.
That's going to result in a whole lot of people getting hosed over in some way. So hopefully you guys are able to look out for the individual citizens in this, or it's all over.
Thanks for your.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? Do you have anybody from Zoom? Is there like, I don't think so. I have the one person. Okay.
We have one just popped up.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Schumacher.
Oh, I have one on Zoom. There you're available.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
My name's Benjamin Shoemaker from the Fourth District, five six five Terra Alta Drive. I just wanted to make a quick comment. I'm in favor of the every every two-year reassessment process. Not only will it include property improvements, but I think would also improve the um integrity of the reassessment process, not because you're taking it from the contractors, which has had very little governance from the commissioner's office. I think bringing it in in-house will make it a lot more accurate and uh reliable. So I'm in favor of it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. Anyone else?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I am seeing a typed comment coming through on Zoom. If um if one of the guys wants to pull that up.
Oh, yes. It looks like the lady from West Point. Yes, I got her email today. Yes, Mrs. Bristow, did you want to speak? The same issues year over year, bad data and bad data out. One of my lots is underwater, yet it's now worth fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, we all got an email from her just.
Yeah, just before the meeting, so we haven't had time to see it. But yeah, she had three lots.
I read part of it. Looked into it.
And hers seems like the same issue that the gentleman here has. Unlike what Mr. Hodges has, which is the opposite. His went up because he thinks the property is worth it, but he doesn't want to pay that for selling. But this other gentleman and Mrs. Bristow, it looks like they got the opposite. The land isn't worth anything because she says it's in a FEMA flood zone, and they jacked it. Almost two hundred and some thousand dollars. I don't, I said, hopefully we'll work out these problems.
Most of West Point is in in flood.
Right. Okay.
And that's an ongoing issue with the whole middle peninsula situation, especially uh, oh gosh, Matthews will be underwater before anybody. So it's not only just West Point, it's a huge northern mid middle peninsula.
I was thinking she didn't want to speak.
Right. It's not working, but she did. Well, she had determined I could sound it's not working, but not all the lots along the river are in the same RPA district either. So it looks like she's in. Thank you, Ms. Bristow. Anyone else commenting on there? Anywhere in the room?
You said you were.
Yeah, okay. I will close the comment period. Now, I guess we will take any motions or any comments or suggestions.
I'd like to recommend the adoption of ordinance zero nine dash two zero, setting the general reassessment of real estate every two years in King William County.
But what was the ordinance number again?
Zero nine twenty, page fifty nine.
I'm not sure what I'm looking at here.
Good thing I got page numbers this time.
I'm with you there.
I'll second that.
Okay. Okay. I think we have a motion made and promptly seconded. Is there any more discussion?
I I guess I would just add, Mr. Chairman, that, you know, a- as far as the concerns about data, you know, that's the purpose of the appeals process. That's why the appeals process is in in encoded, you know, or rather codified in state code. Uh, it's because there's a recognition that when you do a mass appraisal, there'll there'll be disputes, there's potential for for errors in data. That should be corrected during the appeals process. Um, but the to the first gentleman that spoke as far as the process itself, again, moving away from contracted vendors is the goal of this. And uh, to me, that is fundamentally changing the process, and it's one that we can uh directly manage much more effectively, uh, which would improve the overall results, uh, I I think, uh, quite a bit. Um, and and I think, again, just one of the problems that we seem to be having in this cycle is that the data from the last assessment is is basically no longer relevant uh to to the market values of of a lot of the properties that we're trying to assess and increasing that frequency and having the relevant data to base your work off of. You're not reinventing the wheel every time you're doing, uh, you know, you're doing this assessment. So um, I I think, and the reason that that I've uh continued to advocate for this is that I I think it would uh improve the process and improve the results and and result in a much more consistent, much uh more fair and more accurate uh product um cycle after cycle.
Thanks, Travis. Okay, we have a motion and seconded. Mrs. Lawrence, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Mr. Moskowsky?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Garber?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye. Motion carries. Next item we have on the agenda is ten B, the CARES Relief Act update. Ms. Natasha Jurnley, Director of Financial Services. Welcome, Natasha.
Good evening.
Evening.
I'm going to be really quick. I know you guys are probably ready to move on out of here. Um, to date, the county has been awarded and received a total of two million nine hundred ninety two dollars and one hundred ninety four in federal funds to commit to COVID nineteen related expenditures by December thirtieth, twenty twenty. As part of the overall overall allocation, the county has allocated five hundred seventy one thousand five hundred nine dollars and four cents to the town of West Point, based on U.S. Census Bureau population data. In fiscal year twenty twenty, the county received one point four million, and the county spent only forty nine thousand five hundred eighty one dollars of that. Um, so we were able to carry that forward into twenty twenty one. Um, at that point too, we did give um West Point two hundred eighty five thousand. Uh, so total for the for twenty twenty, we spent three hundred thirty five thousand three hundred thirty five. So we had a remaining balance to carry over to twenty twenty one of one point one million. In twenty twenty, this year, we are budgeting to spend two point four million dollars of the CARES money. Um, we did receive an additional one point four in twenty twenty. So for the county's expenditures, we're looking at spending one point one million, the schools, one million, the town uh for twenty twenty one, keep in mind, is the two hundred eighty five. And we have um another entity called Cornerstone. We did give, we approved uh two thousand seven hundred forty two dollars to go to them for the food bank. Um, all departments are working diligently to receive products and service by year end. That is a condition of the funds that we have to have received and um the product has to be, yeah, the service has to be complete.
Check cash or appropriate?
No, it has to be, we have to have spent it. We can't accrue it.
You have to actually get the money and take it.
It's got to be gone. We have to have received that product. Um, the remaining funds available right now for twenty twenty one that we have not budgeted yet of the of the two point nine million is one hundred eighty nine thousand dollars. That's it. Oh, we we have, we're going to use the money, I think. Um, I will say that uh the CARES program that we have for uh that we've offered throughout the the community, we've only received maybe five applicants. All five have received the 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 funding. Um, so that's still out there. We have a lot of money earmarked for that, and we have not had a huge response on that.
Were the sheriffs body cams included?
Yes, they were. Um, we ended up, we were able to purchase the devices themselves um and the software, everything that goes along with that for the body cams uh for a total of sixty thousand, I believe, is where we're at with that.
Yes.
So with the EDA projects and all the things, is there going to be a notional cutoff date?
Uh, I believe our our CARES program is November fifteenth. Yeah, so I'm sure the EDA is going to want to do the same thing.
Do we have any targets as to how we're going to spend the remaining?
They come in daily. Even today I had some already. So and I'm sure the schools probably, the schools um have talked to me a little bit the other day. Um, Stacy Longus and I have talked about um the need of maybe reallocating some funds that we've borrowed already.
And they got three rounds from the state.
They, well, I don't know if they've gotten three rounds from the state. They've gotten three rounds from us. They've had three installments.
Okay, maybe I misconstrued the conversation.
I, from my understanding, they are, their CARES fund that goes directly to them is on a reimbursable. They have to submit the expenses to the state prior to receiving the funding. And as far as I know, I think Tripit looked at that for me the other day, and maybe sixty grand has been received by the schools.
Would you mind asking tomorrow?
Sure. No, no problem. And I can go ahead and let all the board know where we're at with that.
Not saying they don't need it, but just clarify.
Yeah, yeah. The unfortunate thing with the schools is they have to front their money up.
Also, they have to actually use their own money for it first and then the.
Yes, they do. It's very different from ours.
Any other questions? Next item we have on the agenda, T ten C, Fire and EMS Monthly Update with Mr. Chief, Chief Stacy Reeves.
Good.
I'm going to introduce uh Captain Ron Brown. He's the captain that we hired for our first full-time supervisor in the field. Um, welcome. Introduce yourself real quick.
Good evening.
Evening.
Hi, Chief Reeve stated, my name is Ronald Brown. I'm privileged and honored to be a captain here at King William. Um, just a little background on myself. Um, I'm originally from Richmond Fire, thirteen years there, um, master firefighter there. Um, but again, like I said, I'm I'm overwhelmed with the opportunity to be here, um, to be a part of the growth and the development of King William, also to be um, I was hand to hand, foot to foot with the the ladies and and gentlemen at the station, um, trying to provide a service for the people that's behind us. Um, I look forward to to growing with you guys. Um, I look forward to uh bringing my my skills uh to the table and and doing the best that we can do and um and making uh King William Fire the best fire department in this area. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Welcome to the team.
All right.
All right. Chief Jones is almost done with his short stint as the temporary assistant chief, helping us make this transition. You guys could introduce.
I'd like to thank y'all for the opportunity. It's been a challenge, it's turned into a pleasure. I feel like we made a lot of ground. With Captain Brown here, we got a great asset to the team and Chief Reeves naturally. Like lots more than I told you. Again, thank y'all for the opportunity.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for helping us.
So we'll start with staffing again. As you guys know, we've been struggling with staffing for a long, long time. Seems like every time we take a few steps forward, we get a few steps backwards. We lost, we hired all of our slots except for one, and one guy quit almost immediately, who took a job in Northern Virginia. He obviously was in multiple hiring processes because they take a little bit of time for him to leave so quickly. He must have already been one. And usually, these guys are looking for that high-speed, high-volume. We had two other folks who quit recently, one who went into law enforcement and the other went to a fire department closure to his town where he, so he didn't have to have such a long.
That's gotta be a little unusual this day, isn't it?
Quitting your fire in order to police right now. Well, this individual, it was well-known that that's where his heart was from the very beginning, and he had the opportunity to go. And I would never try to steal that from him, no matter how hard it hurts us. We did do an assessment around our neighboring departments. And a lot of times, what the fire service will do to try to entice people to come in is to allow a pay incentive for different levels of ALS service. And we did raise our salaries to match the baseline entry level, but we were not competitive at all with the ALS incentives. And with the money that we're paying out and losing through the part-time budget, we've adjusted some of that and we're offering an increased incentive to the two ALS slots for intermediate paramedic. And we're going to, we actually have already begun to push out that advertisement for that through Facebook, the county website, and we're gonna hit the newspapers with that, trying to entice a few more of these pre-qualified folks to come in, trying to grab a few good people to add to our team. And we were going to, we were planning on asking for some additional full-time people in this next budget year and adding to that for the long-term plan with the SAFRA grant coming around. However, the SAFRA grant time, we've determined with all of these things together, it's gonna put us in a shorter timeframe. So we're working on a plan now to present, create a presentation for you guys to give us a short, mid-length window of staffing needs in the next go-around with the meeting. It's a lot of information to try to put together in a really short period of time. I'm gonna try to breathe through this. Captain Brown, being in the station, has done a tremendous job with the workflow and getting the, I guess, the normalization of the firehouse under control. I encourage you guys to take a stop by, look at the firehouse. If you've been there in the past, you know, year versus today, there's a tremendous difference. It just looks like a totally different environment. And the management out in the field is much better than it has been since I've been here. Our part-timers are still kind of in the same situation with about 50% being our ALS providers, still struggling to get them to come to work. We're trying to fill the 24/7 service with part-time employees working at their will, and that's very difficult to do. The true answer is gonna be to fill those slots with full-time employees. We have two different localities that are having meetings with the Board of Supervisors. And I'm sorry, there's some amendments to this sheet because lots have happened since this was written and sent to you guys. So there are two different counties who have these recruit schools that we talked about in the past couple of meetings. Two of them are meeting to discuss allowing us to come in and the price and the fees per person. I think one is being held tonight, maybe both of them. So we should, we'll have a lot more information for you the next time we meet on all of this. Our apparatus, Meg Thirteenth in the same state. The tanker had gone out of service for brake, air brake tank issues. It was repaired for $1,200, now back in service. Brush, the brush truck is back in service. However, it's gonna need new tires, but the truck is like in its end of life. So we're gonna try to milk that as long as we can and make a decision on what we're gonna do with that vehicle. The ambulance did have an accident last Saturday morning in the early hours. It struck a deer. It didn't do any damage to the vehicle. They stopped.
Did deer guard work?
Yeah, the welded one worked. Station one, the broadband has been doing wonderful. It's being shared with the three offices. We're still closed to the public with the hall due to the COVID virus. We applied, it's kind of, kind of quick here. We applied for a grant with Rappahannock Electric. We found the grant quickly, I mean, shortly before it was due. And it's a non-match grant, and we applied for it to help install speakers in the firehouse and to get a radio actually installed in this building so that we can hear the radio traffic here and throughout the entire fire station when they're there. We'd already been working on the project. Our assistant found this by luck and we were able to file for it. We should hear something back in December. Smoke detectors have been installed in all the bedrooms in the station. We are looking at the development of that entire 360 complex, paving and all that stuff. So we're looking at the parking lot. One of the big ticket items that you guys probably want to hear about is the public relations stuff. Everbridge has been replaced with Code Red. Code Red was a citizen alerting system that we used prior to Everbridge. We had terrible, we had, kind of had a terrible time getting people loaded into Everbridge. When we changed back into Code Red, Code Red is very simple for the citizens to utilize and their marketing and team, development team works very well with us. When we left Everbridge and came back to Code Red, we immediately went from having six or 700 people, including employees in Everbridge. When they sent their masks out to reconnect with the citizens, they hit 10,000 people. So it was a tremendous change from what was going out versus what we have now.
10,000 citizens or 10,000 devices?
Accounts. Yeah, however, however it comes in. Yeah, yeah, so I would assume, I would assume that they are talking about citizens because when you go in, you put your name in, and then however many devices, it's still you. And so through, I wouldn't wanna, I don't know how they describe it, but not attrition, but through the messaging and then those guys doing their reconciliation with the accounts that they sent out, they'll be able to market more directly towards the people who are left in the county once the 30 days and 60 days goes past. So we're touching a lot more people. And we're advertising this throughout the county buildings right now on flyers, as well as we're posting stuff up in businesses that they'll let us. We're gonna send the crews around this week and put some flyers up. We're working with the other departments who are having social events or public events going on, making sure that we're trying to get that message out for that specific service. B-DOM has postponed or canceled a lot of their training. Their training for 20, I'm sorry, new training exercises will not, applications will not be accepted for 2021. All the 2020 exercises will be rescheduled for 2021. All technical assistance exercise trainings have been canceled. That includes the Pamukkie Tribe training workshop that they had on the schedule of B-DOM. King William was on the list for 2021, and that has been postponed until further notice. We'll have to wait on the State Department to get back with us on that. They have to supply two nuclear trainings and one vest training. We will be included in the Lake Ana nuclear training whenever that is put out there. And like everybody else, they're trying to do some virtual training. We're at their mercy with them getting that stuff set up. And we will be able to use our Zoom platform to have that training if it comes available for us. We, we applied for the RSAF grant, which will assist the purchase of Life Pac 15s and Lucas devices. And that'll put us in a position to where when we have one of our vehicles rolling out of the station, it will be able to be licensed as an ALS device regardless of which EMS piece it is, whether it's an engine, a first response, or any of our ambulances. The CARES funding, we bought stockpiles of uniforms and an extra set of uniforms for each person. Those have all been ordered and are coming in daily. The dryers and all the washers for the gear clean have come in. West Point has got to do some stuff with theirs, so they're storing theirs for a short period of time while they get ready for it. Station one, we had some drywall issues and our maintenance department is correcting that. And Mega Hick has both of their units at their station. So everybody's got their stuff going on except for West Point. It's just being stored until they're ready for it. The N95 mask is status quo. We're reaching out to everybody that we can to try and obtain more masks. We're gonna end up having to get a different brand, which means everybody will be refit-tested for a different type of mask. You can only wear the mask that you're fit-tested for at the time. It's just what we have to do at this point in time is look at having multiples versus just the one. We did order new hose for the engine, and that is, I think I may have spoken about that a little bit earlier this last month or so. It should be here any day. They got pushed back, I think it's coming out of Canada. I believe the factory was shut down for a couple of months in the heat of the COVID crisis there. So there, everything got pushed back. And soon we'll have brand-new hoses and all-new nozzles. So the service delivered for firefighting will be much simpler and much more accurate for our firefighters, and there will be far less guessing with whether or not the hose is gonna pop and which nozzle they're holding on to. Again, I'd like to thank all the guys that work for us, that are working extra hours and pulling overtime, and all of our volunteer organizations for coming out and giving us a hand when things are getting crazy out there with call volume. Mega Hick, West Point, Morrison, all three have helped us out this month, so say thank you to them.
Thank you. Thank you for everything that you did.
Mr. Chairman, one question?
Yes.
For public record purposes, could you please describe the, Mr. Rick Nutley is no longer with the station? Or is it Ms. Tascieneri?
Sure. The, when he, when we, when I took this job, the battalion chief, part-time battalion chief's jobs were dissolved. And he went to a firefighter position. And when he did that, then he would be scheduled as a part-time firefighter whenever he was available to work.
But he's a Richmond or Henrico full-time?
He works for the city of Richmond, full-time.
He was not terminated?
He was not.
He was not terminated for time?
Yes, he was. He was terminated. We have, we let three people go and one part, all part-time, and one, one quit, all at the same time, so it looked like four, it was really three, because our part-timers are not working. So you can't really hire people and buy them $3,000 gear to sit. And so we went back because we're not getting people to fill the seats, and we're getting ready to implement mandatory hours to be delivered and everything. We're trying to do everything we can to maximize our use of these folks. We went back and people who had not turned in any hours over a period of time, we, I just had to make a choice, and I told them, I let them all go. They're not terminated with bad exit. They could still work at the county. They just, they weren't working out for us. And if they, you know, their schedules changed and they want to reapply, they can. And there were, there were three people that go for the same reason. He was the one, he was, had the longest period of time with no activity.
Just for clarification, the public record, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else? Chief.
All right.
Oh, Travis, do you have that? Nope, he didn't, thanks. He nodded his head. That's number. Next item, we have new business, but I don't see anything. If we have any, no, no new business, so we will skip that and go to administrative matters from our county administrative board information. I guess that's in our packet or, it's already in our packet. See if I have any questions.
Anything that stands out of note?
No, pretty much the standard reports that you generally get, the building report, it's a, a new report from the National Financial Planning District and then our man years.
Next, we have Board of Supervisors comments. We're gonna start with Travis since he's on the line.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I obviously can't see the audience, but I imagine we had a fairly good crowd there tonight. So, oh, great. All right, well, thanks to everyone who came out. I know that, you know, these assessments are a hot topic, but we've got to get through this process, make sure everybody is equalized, and make sure that there's equity to it. And I know that the Board of Equalization will be committed to that and seeing that through. Thanks to my fellow board members for allowing me to stay home this evening. I already feel a little bit better than I was at the start of this, but don't think I could have made it through the meeting up there on my own. So everyone, stay safe. Whatever your plans for Halloween are, please be safe, and we'll see you back here next month.
Mr. Hodgins?
I don't know a whole lot. Just get over what he says, you're always very eloquent in presenting. We gotta be a little bit patient here, but I would note, any, if you don't like the assessment, I don't know yet because I haven't gotten mine, but I would have, if it goes up like your real estate when I'm feeling, then go before the board just to see. Because that is a dramatic increase for everybody. We haven't figured the rate, it keeps going around, and we've already decided on the rate and we haven't done that, that's probably untruth. And I think with Mr. Moore was talking about earlier, it's supposed to putting out and we're firing people to hit left and right, and that information from the Tea Party, I'll say who it is, is incorrect. But again, thank you, be safe over the Halloween and tonight going on. As I said earlier, the ambulance hit a deer, there's plenty of them out there right there. And I'm gonna thank everyone.
Mr. Howard?
Yeah, I'd like to thank everybody for coming and thank especially the people that stepped up to the plate tonight and expressed concern about their assessments. Like Bill, I've already been through my hearing, and it was mistakes, in my opinion. But you need to schedule it, get your information together. It'll make it that much easier to go to the Board of Equalization if you have any problems. And what I said tonight about the contract, that's, that's just me. I just can't, earthly, I can't understand how you can sign a contract with the firm and he can automatically drop 5,000 parcels from his, from his job. It makes sense to me, but again, thank everybody for coming.
I'll just reiterate everybody's comment. I, it's not a popular observation, but I look at it that we've been undertaxed for the last five years and that the values were increasing each year, but the taxes effectively remained the same. So how we balance what's needed in this community, we just heard we need. So how we balance what's needed in this community, we just heard we need personnel, we need better equipment. We have comments from the public that they're taxed too high already. So it's gonna be interesting next year, my second budget drill with all, with a year's worth of knowledge and experience now. But it's gonna be interesting. But thanks for coming, everyone, getting involved in your government.
Yeah, I guess it's my turn. I wanted to tell Travis, we had a lot more people here, Travis, than the picture I just showed you. I mean, it was twice as many people in the audience at this. A lot of people left early, but thanks, everybody, for coming. And like I said, it's a shame sometimes that the people leave early because I'm gonna have to reiterate the same thing as Travis eloquently does and everybody else. If you have trouble with your assessment, call the eight-hundred number on that sheet and talk to Mr. Chastain and Ms. Teagle or their associates that go through this first process. If you don't go through the first process, it's hard to go through the second process. I've got my appointment tomorrow. And Bill, like I said, hasn't even got his sheet yet. There's still some issues with the mail, getting to certain people in the county. Like I said, I wanna thank everybody for coming. And that's just, like I said, there's always gonna be ups and downs, just like politics. There's always gonna be one side and the other side. One side has to win. Somebody's gonna be high, somebody's gonna be low, and that's where the average comes out, unfortunately. Like what we hear, I guess, is the high ones. We don't hear the people coming in here, which are just as many as below, as the high ones, coming in saying, oh, mine's undervalued. I wanna make sure this is higher because people don't wanna pay even more taxes. But like I said, that's probably just as much of an error, but we don't know about them. There's nothing we can do about them. So we have to take what people bring in, take the procedures that are in place, hope everything works out, do your review process, do your appeals. You need to go to the next step. The Board of Equalization coming in January. And then once that's all settled, we'll come up with an amount. And like I said, it can't be more than one percent of what, above what it was last year. We're not doing a public hearing to raise taxes. So whatever the, hopefully the average is, everybody, supposedly the average is, you'll be equal. It'll be the same as what you've been paying. If it's less than that amount, when you look at that number on your sheet, let's just use an example. If it's thirty percent, we come up with the rate, do we have to reduce it? If you've got a thirty percent increase, yours is null, it's equal. It's the same thing you've been paying all along. If yours is twenty, you're paying ten percent less than what you're paying now. If yours is forty, you're paying ten percent more. And unfortunately, like I said, these men that came in here today, some of them are two hundred, some are one fifty, some are eighty. So they're all over the place. But hopefully the ones, if there are errors, hopefully they can get them resolved in the proper channels to go through in the next coming months. And then we will come up with a new budget in April, so with a new rate. So I thank everybody again for coming. And we do have a closed meeting, but they don't seem to have a seat.
I've got one, I hope I've got the right information. Mr. Chair, in accordance with Section 2.2, Day 3711A1, Dakota, Virginia, I move that the Board of Supervisors convene in closed meeting to consider a personnel matter involving appointments and recommendations of individuals to boards and commissioners.
I'll second. Have a motion made and properly seconded, any more discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Clark?
Mr. Moskoffy?
Hi.
Mr. Hodges?
Hi.
Mr. Gruber?
Hi.
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
We're in.
And Travis, we're gonna call.
Right, I'll carry my computer into the other room unless you've got something set up already.
I was gonna say, I should probably call somebody.
I'll carry my computer into the boardroom.
That's an open Zoom.
Yeah, you can't, it won't.
You've got an open Zoom that's been going.
Oh, never mind. Can I log in again with another one?
No, because we're the host.
Call us, call us.
Steven, I'll just call your phone. I'll just call your phone for this part, okay?
All right, thanks. We're in a closed session, we'll be back. Hopefully it won't take too long.